I'm here to be the ad hoc committee of our Special Olympics and I'll be joined shortly by a council member, Bruce Guyano, in pulling up right now, but I'd like to start the meeting right now. First, I've got to call on public comment and a card from Mr. Herman.
Sir, may I wait for a form?
No, I'm taking it now.
Okay.
I'll give you two minutes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Good morning, Angelenos from Los Angeles. I'm recording live for you regarding our Special Olympics. As all of you anticipate, the race, like I do, our fine Olympians will soon discover that access to our public streets and sidewalks are still unsafe and the city has a responsibility for fixing the slip and fall issues involving them. Now, nowhere on the agenda, on item one, which is the only agenda item, does it speak to us about the cost of the transportation issue here, although it will be a topic of conversation this morning on item number one. And so, people with disability need to understand is that unless we get our infrastructure of sidewalks and streets corrected in the city of Los Angeles, we will not have a safe, accessible commute. However, because of this special event, thanks to Mr. Labange and his missing staff, Joe Busciano, Mr. Corin Price, I'm informing you that if we continue to not provide access to persons with disability, the city of Los Angeles is in contempt of the law not to provide safe access on public sidewalks and streets for the future Americans who are disabled, or as I put it, who have and live with a disability. Not that we're retarded or crazy, it's just that we have a unique way of dealing with others regarding our life and our style. And as you see, I'm a well-known name under Mr. Africa, as I signed up on my card, and even as Mr. Mark Twain, as I quote you in the last closing seconds, "That state, one and God make a majority," Frederick Douglass.
All right, so that is public comment. Now, I'm going to call on item one. I have one card for that. Mr. Herman, you can sit back down and your comment, please. Item one.
I'm going to wait for a...
I'm calling you now. I'm calling you now, if you want to speak down. All right, finally, I called Mr. Herman. He doesn't want to speak.
All right, have a seat.
Okay? Thank you.
Item number one is a motion from council members Labange and...
You're going to speak, Mr. Herman?
Yes, sir.
Then please sit down.
He doesn't have to yell at me. I heard you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for the second opportunity to speak on item one. Now, I'm going to read it straight from the agenda because usually they say that we're off-topic. Motion from Mr. Labange and Busciano relative to cutting costs for the multiple street closures that will be happening in 2015 Special Olympics World Games within the city and supporting the Los Angeles Police Department and the Special Olympics in the final leg of the torch run. Well, we know that we need the police department to protect us or protect our rights when we're basically mentally or disabled and accessing our sidewalks and streets so that we're not gunned down, but that's a different topic. I'm talking about the relative cutting costs for multiple street closures. I think that there should not be multiple closures because, again, you're denying access to the public by this process of barriers. Come on, let people enjoy the Olympics without this hindrance. Really? Really? Come on, on the Special Olympics at the ad hoc committee, you're going to tell me that we have to cut costs for the multiple street closures? I thought in America we were safe and secured on our sidewalks and streets. And cutting the cost for having and supporting the Los Angeles Police Department for the Special Olympics, I find that a waste and abuse of taxpayers' money because none of us who are disabled are going to do anything intimidating or threatening to the public? Is that how you look at us, people with disabilities? I'm just asking a question. I mean, I've got 29 seconds, but no one's going to answer, as you all know that, you know, poor gentleman, Mr. Charlie Satormin Robinet, known as AKA Africa, was disabled and wasn't given the same opportunity in America, but instead he was gunned down and murdered. And I hate the fact that someone can allow this to happen, like Mayor Eric Garcetti, and so we're not safe as being individuals with a disability in Los Angeles anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Esfroza, please note those cards for the comment. That completes comment on this. Could I have the department staff and Mr. Carr at the center table? I'd like to hear from Jeff Carr first and then go forward with the rest of the delegation.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Carr. I'm the chief operating officer for the 2015 Special Olympics World Summer Games. Councilmen, we're really excited to be here and give you a quick update on what's happening. We are making tremendous progress. We are actually, today marks 144 days away from opening ceremony, which is going to be a great event at the L.A. Memorial Coliseum on Saturday, July 25th, live on ESPN, starting at 6:00 P.M. And we wanted to focus today particularly on the torch run and sort of make sure there's been a little bit of confusion, I think, in the city family about how the city is supporting the organization right now as the games, as well as some delineation. So, as we talked about in Budget and Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, we've generated about $53 million so far. Our goal is 68 million, so we're about 15 million short on the way to finishing this out. The city is supporting us in two ways right now. One is through a security planning team, an emergency planning team, of which Mike...
Sergeant, Speaker's voice bounces off the back of that, so if you please ask him to be quiet. Thank you.
So, you, the city has actually provided some loaned employees through both the fire department and the police department. Mike Greenup is from L.A. Fire Department, has been embedded with our team and helping us particularly with emergency planning and emergency transport, and I'll let him talk about that in a moment. And then Dennis, Commander Dennis Cato is from LAPD, and he has a team that has been working on all of our security planning, really coordinating not just with the LAPD, but with the Sheriff's Department and other jurisdictions, campus police at USC and UCLA. And they're really focused on security. Then there's another group of folks within LAPD who are part of the torch run. The International Law Enforcement Torch Run Committee is part of the Special Olympics movement that really, they are the guardians of the flame of the torch that is run throughout the world. And we will actually be picking up the torch, getting the torch in Greece on May 12th. We'll be sending the delegation to actually get the flame. UPS, one of our sponsors, will be flying the flame back to the United States to launch what will be called the Unified Run Across America. And so, there'll be three...
When it gets to LAX, where's it go from there?
It doesn't come from, UPS will be bringing it from Greece to Washington, D.C.
Right.
There will be three legs that's of the Unified Run Across America sponsored by Bank of America. Will be in, one leg in Miami, one in Washington, D.C., and one in Boston. Those three legs will actually make their way across the United States. They will touch all 48 states, lower 48 states, and then they're going to actually take a plane to Hawaii and a plane to Alaska to touch those states. It will then come into California, and here in Los Angeles, it will arrive on Friday night, July 10th. And it'll either arrive here, we haven't decided yet, it may be coming, there's a Dodger game that night, it may come to Dodger Stadium, or it may come here to Bunker Hill, to the Bank of America headquarters in Los Angeles. And then the torch will get here, there'll be a small celebration here in Los Angeles, and then the torch will be transferred up to Sacramento.
By flight?
No, by car. And then they will launch the final leg in California on Monday, July 13th, at the Capitol with the governor. And then there'll be three routes that will run throughout California and make its way down to Los Angeles. And so, with that, I'll turn over...
Three routes?
Three routes.
One down Highway 1, one down 99, one down 395?
Yeah, and I actually wanted to turn it over at this point to Roberta Abner, who is a recently retired deputy chief from the Sheriff's Department, who has graciously decided to volunteer her time full-time to help us lead this effort. She is a member of the International Law Enforcement Torch Run Committee, the head of the torch run committee here in California and is a fantastic member of our team. And she is the woman with all the details on this event, so I'm going to let her talk.
Chief, thank you.
Good morning. I also have a handout that will describe to you the differences between all of the various torch runs that he just described, the Unified Relay Across America. And we will take that handoff as he described on July 10th. And the final leg team, there's three routes to the final leg team, and as you described it, it kind of hits those regions. It'll spend four days in Northern California, and then it will traverse to Southern California. So, the first day, it's up in San Luis Obispo, Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, Calabasas, then we drive to Santa Isidro, to the border, and then we make our way back up north to finally end up in the city of Los Angeles. We have leads, we have law enforcement leads for each of those days, and they go out and try to make all the accommodations to be that liaison as part of my team to make that day as special as it can be, the ceremony. So, the lead for the LA, we have a day that we call Light Up the City for the city of Los Angeles, and the lead is Lieutenant Al Lebrada, who's sitting in the audience today. And so, we will touch all 15 council districts. He's worked with the council districts to identify a ceremony site. Our run typically, it's ceremonial.
Right.
So, they all look the same. The bus carries the runners, they come in a mile or less out, they run into a ceremony site. Some of the logistical aspects that I asked the leads to come up, we need to get a podium set up, obviously, you know, amplifiers, speakers, that sort of thing. But typically, they run in, they greet the audience, they stage, a law enforcement officer speaks, an athlete speaks, dignitaries. So, we, you know, select either the mayor or city council from that district to speak. We'll give them talking points for that. And then we have local entertainment, you know, could be whatever might be unique to that area or a disabled group. And then they will exchange a gift. And so, the law enforcement officer and the Special Olympic athlete will give the councilman a gift. It could be like...
Or councilwoman.
Or councilwoman. It will be either, you know, something like, might be from their agency, like a patch or a coin, something unique for them, and the athlete will give them a coin from the final leg. And then the council person would be, would offer them something unique to their district that they would present to the runner. There have been times that they've presented to the entire group of runners.
Is this going to be rolling closures?
The team rolls in with an escort.
But I mean, let's say we're running out of Wilshire Boulevard, and the greatest guy in the world's sitting right back there, working on his phone. Come on up to the, to the table, so that you get, this is DOT Superman.
Yes, I've met him before.
Yes, yeah.
Good morning, Councilman Bunch.
Chris, get him a chair. He deserves a chair because all he hears is service there. Good job. Mike, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Good morning. It will be a bubble formation. Can you hear me? No. It will be a bubble formation, and the bubble will move in traffic, and it will occupy the curb lane, possibly an adjacent traffic lane. It will be, I'm assuming Chief Kero, motorcycle units in the back and in the front, correct?
Yeah, that's what would be anticipated.
Got it. And then, and do we have to post those streets?
No, there's no posting.
Okay, so...
The impact is minimal.
Right, got it. So, and it's, and it's minutes, not hours?
No, no, yes, absolutely.
But there's a spontaneity that takes place. I coordinated the '96 Olympic torch relay. I like to brag about it, Councilman, Bruce Guyano, because originally they wanted, it came at the Athens game in Atlanta, and they Delta flew in with the flight, that's why I asked those questions, and they helicoptered the Coliseum, and they wanted originally run from the Coliseum to Huntington Beach. And I said, "No, no, 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 you've got to run through the city." And then the guy from the FBI, Steve Moore, who's an agent, got really upset because I sent it south because I wanted to run through the city. I had this great opportunity with Mayor Riden to set the route. We went through all the neighborhoods, and if we were in Little Tokyo, there was a little flavor of Japanese culture when we went to Taitown, whatever the case may be. And we were able to get through the city and the valley and come all the way around. And it was a fundraiser for the United Way, so the runners were, some of them were funded, they paid to run on that.
Yeah, that's actually going to happen on the Unified Run Across America, that's going to happen in other states, but here in Los Angeles, on a leg, it's all either athletes or law enforcement.
Got it.
That'll be doing it. And we really chose to try and have as minimal impact, as Roberta said, the Light Up the City is all on Thursday, the 23rd, so it'll be two days before opening ceremony. The idea was to really compact that. We'll divide our 140 or so members into three teams, so we'll be able to touch all the different council offices in the city. And then the next day, on Friday, the 24th, our hope is to actually come to city council for the 10 o'clock council meeting and bring the torch in one place here at City Hall.
Yeah, now, the last time, just to let you know, because in '84, when they ran it, we came to the steps right here.
Right.
So, maybe we asked that we come out, because I don't know what the fire code is, bring an open flame in the building, and I think that could be arranged with Mr. Wester, but Mr. Bruce Guyano will be there leading the way because I'll be on Main Street with my collar up, you know, just out. So, but anyway, God, I'm getting a chill, it's coming to the end here. But I think we could work that. And also, you mentioned the observatory, or someone mentioned the observatory?
Yeah, on Friday, our goal is, we're going to have, the torch will come by our headquarters, which is at the U.S. Bank Tower Building right across from the Central Library. We'll have a ceremony there, then our goal is for it to come to City Hall for a ceremony here at City Hall. And then to go to the Hall of Justice, where the Sheriff's headquarters will be moved by then, and then to the head, to the observatory for an event up at the observatory.
Okay, we're in a mountain fire district. I want it. We're in a mountain fire district, you'll have enough protection around it, you'll get 35s and 56s to lead the way, so, and all that, so that's a great thing.
And then we'll have a ceremony to close out that night. We'll have, the plan is to have a ceremony at LA Live at ESPN there. And then the next day, it'll come into the, it'll come into the stadium.
Right.
For the ceremony, opening ceremony.
This is exciting.
There's lots of bringing it, what are the South Bay cities, down like Long Beach?
Well, it's going to be at Long Beach, Roberta probably has a, yeah.
Rosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, San Pedro.
Is it a possibility to run across the Vincent Thomas Bridge?
St. Vincent Thomas Bridge.
Initially, we had that in the plan, but we've since changed that. We'll be close to it, but we won't...
Is there a reason for that? Is it maybe the state or Caltrans?
Well, because we had to put some other things into that plan, and we just couldn't fit it in the time span that we had.
I see.
I think part of it was also concern about closing down that thoroughfare with the torch run.
One lane, right?
Just one lane.
Yeah, yeah. So, maybe you could work on that if you would with the deputy chief, just look, and maybe it could hopscotch, if it's running in downtown Long Beach, hopscotch it to the beginning of the bridge and have a short closure, because there's nothing more dramatic than the House of Blue Lights at the St. Vincent Thomas Bridge. Because Bobby DiNino called it St. Vincent Thomas, and he, okay, I'll stop there.
It'd be quite...
But if you maybe could work on the side...
Let us know if we can help in...
Where in San Pedro does it go? Down against Porchacall or...
At the USS Iowa.
Okay.
Nice.
There'll be a ceremony there.
Fantastic.
But if I could ask you, chief, if you could work with Councilman Bruce Guyano and maybe work it out, if it did, you know, if it got in Long Beach right on Ocean Avenue, that's great for their town and whatever comes around, but I know the St. Vincent Thomas Bridge, forgive me, Pedro, Feudal, too, is, would be great. So, if you could work on, maybe work it out with the lieutenant, it's an opportunity.
Yeah, even with our local Assembly member, Pat O'Donnell, who would embrace it.
But anyway, this is exciting. Now, does each, I'm looking to the lieutenant right now, do you have a contact of the chief field deputy or whoever at each council district?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Al Lebrada. The, after the motion was passed by you, we asked for a representative from each council district. We have obtained those council district reps. We're working with them, we're actually organizing our first planning meeting on March 12th.
Got it.
But we've already started working on the legs, and we're trying to finalize the logistics of that now.
All right, good. So, this is good. And if you're rolling closure, this is good, this is...
Yes, as I said, I would compare it to a funeral procession, only, only slower than that.
Right, and more joyous.
Yes, of course.
Okay, yeah, got it, okay.
And just as you, just so you know, in terms of the way we're planning, and I think it might be good for maybe Mike and for Dennis Cato to talk about sort of the security and emergency planning elements, too, if you're done with the torch, but the way we're treating opening ceremony is really like a large, like a USC Notre Dame or USC UCLA, so a large USC football game in terms of the crowd, the expectations, and the traffic, so that's the way we've been planning.
Last thing on the torch, just so for the lieutenant and the chief, come in with your routes, probably the council people like to tweak them a little, they may want to say something, but let's try to tweak it early, Joe, because you don't want to, you want to see if you can figure it out. But anyway, let's hear from Chief Greenup.
Commander Cotto has the first spot, if you want to start off.
Very good, thank you.
And I pick it up after him.
Got it.
You, Councilman.
Morning, Councilman.
Morning, there, Commander.
We gave you a handout that shows you the timeline, so just like Mr. Carr mentioned, opening ceremony begins on the 24th. That is probably the single largest event of the Special Olympics that we're going to be working on. We anticipate, because of the way we're doing the production, the bull will probably hold somewhere in the vicinity of about 60,000. Athletes will be on the field, so we killed a lot of the seats because of the production.
At the Coliseum?
At the Coliseum. But the way we're going to secure that site is we have a perimeter, a soft perimeter around the actual four streets, and then there'll be a hard closure as you get closer inside the exposition park. Special Olympics has made or is still working on arrangements with the Natural History Museum to have a special VIP event there, so that we will not impact that services at that museum. But there are several other museums that are still operating. The Air and Space Museum will still be open, and we're working our security plan to not impact that operation as much as possible. There are indications that there could be some very high-profile dignitaries that will arrive, potentially the president and the first lady, and potentially heads of states from other countries. That will not impact our security plan, we're planning as if they are arriving, because it's easier for me to scale that down, should they not arrive. A ceremony starts at 1800 on that Saturday, but we will probably start closures inside that park around 3:00, 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon. Working with ARAM, we don't anticipate major street closures around that venue. Most, all the athletes are being bussed in from UCLA and from USC from where they're being housed, and that'll be the bulk of the contingent that comes in there.
Will they come in on the south side of the Coliseum between the...
We are bringing the athletes into the sports arena, where they'll be housed until the ceremony begins.
So, that lot on Martin Luther King and Figueroa will be the...
That's where all the buses are, yeah. Lot 6 is where the buses are coming in. So, most of the major lots in that exposition park are being utilized by us at the Special Olympics.
Is Metro on your team, Metro?
We've been meeting with Metro, and so we're actually pushing as many people as we can to use Expo line and public transportation, because actually, we're taking over a lot of the parking, as I understand it, from our transportation team at the, at Expo Park. So, there'll be some parking...
Are they on your team like the chiefs are? Is Metro sitting on your working group?
Yes, yes.
Got it, okay.
Absolutely. So, when we met with transportation, to reiterate what Mr. Carr said, we're not forcing, but we're, we're trying to have people park in the convention center, up by Staples Center, and then use the gold line, right, and then get dropped off right there at exposition park, which would facilitate...
Not the gold line, it's called the Expo lines.
The Expo line, the Expo line.
But a question, is there a counterpart at the Board of Supervisors?
We've been working with the supervisors and the CEO's office. Supervisors, actually, through, mostly Supervisor Kenabi has really taken the lead.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, he's been fantastic. But through the CEO's office...
You're all squared away on all that.
We've been working, they've been great, partner.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then as we move away from the special, from the opening ceremonies, if you take a look at the plan, from the 24th through the 3rd, we are, we actually broke it into five, what we call hubs, which is USC, where a lot of the events are taking place, UCLA on the campus of UCLA, Long Beach in their marine aquarium area, their water stadium. Griffith Park, we're using the two golf courses and the Equestrian Center at Griffith Park. And then the L.A. Convention Center in the South Hall, where they're building out a number of venues inside of the South Hall. So, as we look at this from a security standpoint, we are not closing streets around any of those venues. The campuses are pretty self-contained. We're working with UCLA PD and also USC DPS to ensure that LAPD can support their manpower. None of these are ticketed events, other than the opening ceremony and potentially the closing, so these are open to all guests. So, there isn't a hard screening like a normal Olympics, so there isn't a hard perimeter or isn't fencing. Nobody's being searched at those, other than a visual search, and if I see a bag that looks suspicious, then we would have volunteers ask to examine the bag. But from an LAPD standpoint, it's really more of a high-profile, visibility-type deterrent. And really, I want the officers to interact with the community and with the, with the members that are coming in, the athletes and their delegates. So, when you, the way I've built it at each of these venues, it's a very, not robust, I've been very conscious of how many officers I'm putting out there, but I do want a visible presence out there to deter potential problems, but also to be good ambassadors for the city.
Right, absolutely. And when you said, Commander, then most of the guests that will be at the venues were similar to what happened last year at USC at the swim meet, it was just kind of walk-up, people who were family and friends of the Special...
Well, we're, yes, we will actually, we expect about 6,000 family members that'll be registering through a families program we have. We expect another about 4,500 honored guests, so that'll be dignitaries, other sponsors, people like that. And then we're actually, you probably have seen a lot of our advertising on billboards and commercials, radio and television and bus stops.
The airport, too.
Yeah, at the airport. Airport's been fantastic, yeah, they've, those are up until the games. So, that's, there's starting to be a buzz out there now about the games, and so we're really hoping to drive lots of people. I mean, the whole goal is to get people to come watch the games. So, we have a whole team inside the Games Organizing Committee of Fan Development Team that's just out there working with groups to, to get them to come out and build the stands. Because obviously, you want to have, even in the Olympics, some of the venues sometimes are, are not filled, and we really want to make sure we have the venues filled with spectators and really, really give the athletes a fantastic experience.
Sure, that's good.
But to walk through this program again, so prior, the athletes will arrive into the city, beginning on the 20th through the 23rd of July, and they're all, they will be coming in through LAX. Chief Gannon at LAX will set up a security detail that will escort those athletes and their delegates over to Loyola Marymount University, where the Special Olympics has set up a screening area where they will do healthy athletes and provide medical services, screen, screen these athletes from other countries for dental, eye, other medical treatments that they could receive. And then from there, they will be put on buses and taken to their host cities. So, there's a number of host cities throughout Southern California that have accepted, not the responsible, but they will allow athletes and their contingents to live in their city, take them around, acclimate to the climate in Southern California. So, those, from the 23rd up until the opening ceremony, those athletes will be in those host cities.
And some of those, just to interject, some of those host cities are communities in Los Angeles, you know, Councilman Busciano, San Pedro is one of those host towns or host communities. So, there's probably a half a dozen to 10 actually in, you know, a place like Studio City, to, you know, it's, they identified as Studio City, but it's a part of the city of Los Angeles. So, we've got some athletes that'll actually be staying in the city of Los Angeles during the host town program, the three days.
And from a security standpoint, all we ask is that the cities be in contact with my command post, and just to keep track of the athletes, if there's any issues, if any of them wander off, or if there's some emergency that needs some type of response, they'll be in contact through my command post. Then once, on the 24th, they will all then be brought in, and they're either housed on the UCLA campus itself or at the USC campus, depending on what sport, what activity they're going to be participating in. That piece of it, that security plan, UCLA has a very good housing area that is monitored by cameras, there's a check-in and out process through card readers. USC will be using on-campus residences, but there are some off-campus residence sites. So, if you take a look at your map, there are identified off-campus housing areas that we are working now with USC DPS to really put a robust police presence, off-hours, into that area, and really have signage and lighting that's appropriate to get these athletes in and around the area safely as possible. What I've been working with Patricia Wieland's office is also to get lighting fixed in the area, to make sure that the, there are no dark areas around that housing area around USC, and then also make sure the lines of sights for the cameras at USC DPS, that the trees are trimmed properly so that we don't impinge on, on any of those views, to give to give me the best look on that venue as possible. Once the athletes then arrive, then they are the responsibility of the Special Olympics, and I will have a command post running 24 hours, starting on July 24th through the end of the games on August 3rd. And in that command post, we will be tied in with, Long Beach is handling the security at Long Beach themselves, there will be no LAPD or city assets in Long Beach, but they will have a representative in our command post, we'll be talking to them 24 hours a day, right next to each other. Similar to UCLA, UCLA is a state campus that has their own police force. I've worked with Chief Hare in there, and we've also worked out an arrangement, so we'll, we'll be in touch, and he'll have a representative in my command post 24/7. So, we'll have that connectivity in that way. School PD has offered, Steve Zipperman has been very, very gracious, they are going to handle the security and transportation of all the, all the athletes with school buses and with escorted by school police officers.
Got it, and do, are they paying the district for that? You have to pay their cost?
Yeah, well, actually, the district, we, we were trying to, we wanted to make these games as green as we could, and so, we actually had gotten Southern California Gas Company to agree to pay all the, for all the fuel costs, but we were trying to source clean buses, there's not very many, there's, actually, there's no private market for those yet.
Right.
So, we were able to convince the school district, actually committed to allow us to use 300 of their gas-powered, natural gas-powered buses. And then, we're going to actually hire, they're going to give those to us for free, which is a big gift to us, and then, we're going to simply pay for the drivers, so the existing drivers that drive the, for the school system, they're off at that time anyway, so it gives them a chance to earn some extra money, and so, we're paying their salary. So, it's good for us and for them.
Good.
Yeah, similar to the cost of the officers, that's just, that's something that they're absorbing out of the school district budget. So, they'll be handling that piece of it, and then, I'll turn it over to Mike to go over the EMT aspects of this.
Councilman, the fire department's been actively involved in the planning process with United, with the unified commanders, doing the incident action plan, the ICS plan, and also, another important function of us is the fire safety plan with the inspectors, make sure every venue is safe, all the fire protection equipment works, and then, the life safety exits, the bleachers are set up properly, and signing off on all the, the plans and the maps. And then, a big portion of this with athletes of intellectual disabilities, obviously, is EMS piece. We're fortunate enough to have Kaiser as our main sponsor for the games. Kaiser will be handling all the field of play, also at USC and UCLA. USC KEK will take care of the medical plan at USC. UCLA doctors will handle UCLA, and then also, Children's is volunteered to take care of Griffith Park, the Equestrian Center, and Balboa Park. So, we should have a very robust plan. In that, also, we missed the, each, USC and UCLA will have festivals, carnival-type atmosphere that'll run the full-time of the games, we'll have live music, sponsors will be there, and also vendors. We missed one part, which is Family, Family Day, which will be at Grand Park here, that's going to happen on the 29th. It'll run for, start at 1800 hours, run for three hours. It'd be inside the park, so obviously, a county facility interior will be handled by LA County Sheriff's, exterior will be handled by LAPD, and fire department will handle all the EMS, both inside and outside the park. Closing ceremonies, August 2nd. Closing ceremonies won't be as elaborate as open ceremonies, but obviously, elaborate celebration, that's going to run approximately three hours, start at 6 o'clock and run the duration. The departure on August 4th, all the athletes will leave their, their dormitories at USC and UCLA, and at, oh, I'm sorry, on August 3rd, and transportation will be handled by the Special Olympics staff, and all the, all the delegations will be out of their housing by August 4th.
And, and the airports tuned in and got it all squared away, so this is good.
Yeah, Gina Marie Lindsay has been fantastic. The airport has assigned a, a full-time, a person who's just focused on helping us navigate all that, and then, we have a person, our person is, is basically based out there. She used to work for the airline, so she's got relationships both with the LAX personnel, but also with the various airlines, and so, I think we're set up pretty well there. Mike mentioned the festivals. I did have a conversation last week with Danielle Brazil about cultural, cultural affairs being involved. The festivals on both campuses, there are seven regions in the Special Olympics movement around the world, they're organized by regions, and so, our idea, we've been working with the 97 consulates here in Los Angeles, to focus and have entertainment and food on those festivals, to focus on different regions over the seven days. So, we'll have one, say, Latin American Day at USC campus, and then, maybe the next day, we'll have a Southeast Asia Day, and so, we're looking to get, we'll have stages for live entertainment on both campuses. The idea would be to get local entertainment and artists from those particular cultural groups to actually perform, to get food trucks with food from those regions, and to really then work with the consulates to bring out the expat communities from around the world who all live here in Los Angeles, to come out and participate in the games and really celebrate the diversity of Los Angeles.
And Ms., our very special chief of protocol, now, is she handling all that?
She's handling, she's, she's a part of that, yes. Elga Sharp, who used to work for the city.
Right.
We were able to lure her away to help us with this effort.
Good. I was planning one thing at Melrose and La Brea. I don't know if you got my memo?
I'm not sure I got it. What was that?
At Pink's Hot Dog Stand.
Pink's Hot Dog Stand.
They do want to welcome the Special Olympics, so that will be fun, but we'll, we'll talk to you about that.
We'll find a way to get to Pink's.
Yeah, you got it. They love you.
That's right.
They love you. So, this is exciting, and I think, Mr. Chair, if you have any questions, okay? I'd like to see if we can get a coat size report to council soon, just to drum up-
Yeah.
-the interest, because when's the 100 days out? What's the day 100 days?
I think 100 days out is, is, it's either April 15th or April 20th.
April 15th.
Yeah, it's right there.
Is a tax day.
It's another day too, yeah.
I don't want to be tax day.
Yeah. That may be the 100 days out.
I would encourage a, a, a report to our colleagues, I'm sure-
Yeah, absolutely, and some stuff, and then, we also, if you have, Commander, I'll give the President City Council the names of all the deputies, so we could drum up the support that we need, constant, because you're going to run in a roadblock. Did we resolve the thing at the Urban Lights on Wilshire Boulevard? That's good resolved? Good, so, things like that, little things will come up, and just, we want to get it all resolved. It's going to be a great day, and I think there's nothing more exciting than a national, international event. I was fortunate to go to 24 Olympic events, both opening and closing in '84, and worked the torch for the '96 games, and just the celebration is just a moment that you don't want to miss. And tell little Joe over there who's on his little hand machine there, he should be listening. It's for young people like this to get involved and make a difference, you know, and volunteer, which is so great. And I know our mayor is keyed on all this, because he will, how many other cities are we, like Long Beach and others, do we have a relationship with?
Well, the, the events themselves are actually, we were able to keep all of those in the city of Los Angeles, except for six events that are actually more water sports and beach sports that are in Long Beach.
But, other cities are hosting too.
They're the host towns, yes, for the three days before, there's about 85 different communities from San Diego all the way to San Luis Obispo.
Right, well, Ms. Whelan's here for the mayor's office, make sure the mayor knows that, because he likes to think regionally and, and host, you know, maybe something for all the mayors of all these other towns, 100 days out or something, just to drum, beat the drum, and I, I hear on school campuses, high school campuses, volunteerism and all of this is taking place, so I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Carr, what's the status of our host towns? Do we, are we, do we need more?
I think we're, we're, we're pretty much got those now. We were, I think they've, they've finalized last, either they were all finalized last week, we're pretty close. Now, what we're looking for is leadership in those host towns. We were able to identify housing in many cases, but as you know, each host town has a local sort of organizing committee that helps provide the leadership for the housing and the food and whatever events, and kind of plan out the schedule. So, we have some areas, I know, like Hacienda Heights, we've got housing and stuff, but we don't really have great leadership there. There's a few other places like that, where we could use some help in surrounding areas, but we're, we're actually, we've made a lot of progress, we had a really great team of folks.